To order the Weaver City Council meeting of October 28th, 2013, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take role?
Joyce J., Joseph Demott.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
Mike Stites.
Here.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
And George Pond.
Present.
There are a motion to approve the minutes of October 14th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve was seconded by Mr. Starker and Mr. Reinhardt. Changes? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens who wish may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. Now, please step forward and spell your last name for the record for public comment and spell your last name for the record and state your city or address for any item that's not on the agenda.
Rick Adams, A.D.A.M.S. I live in Wheat Ridge. I'm here to offer an invitation to the mayor, to the council, city employees, and all the citizens of Wheat Ridge to attend an open house at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center this Wednesday to help shape the Gold Line or Gold Corridor commuter line. The Denver Regional Council of Governments has a committee called the Communities Initiative Committee, Sustainability Committee, for the Gold Line, and I've been representing the city of Wheat Ridge on that committee. The Gold Line is an 11.2-mile electric transit line that will connect us with Union Station and the rest of the commuter system. The line passes through Denver County, Western Adams County, Arvada, and ends at the Ward Road Station in Wheat Ridge. There are seven total stops. Each stop has a station and people represented on my committee. This open house is Wednesday at the Rec Center between 5:30 and 8:00. I want to stress that it's an open house. You don't need to be there for two and a half hours. You can drop in anytime between 5:30 and 8:00. You can see displays, booths. There will be a short presentation. The short presentations are scheduled at 6 o'clock, 6:45, and 7:30. They are redundant, so it's the same presentation over and over. You can view the booths or the information at your own pace, and there will be Spanish translation available. I would like to invite you to hear how our Gold Line progress is coming along, and there will be people there to answer any questions any citizens may have. Thank you.
Do you have anybody else to speak under public comment on any item that's not on the agenda?
Hi, my name is Tiffany Barnhart, B-A-R-N-H-A-R-T. I live at 3275 Coyle Street. I'm here today because I realize that you often only hear from citizens when they have something to complain about, and I'm actually here to thank you. There's a few things happening in our community that I'm really excited about. I understand that there are some improvements on the board for Pierce Avenue Bike Lane, and I wholeheartedly support that. I hope that continues to move forward. That's something I'd like to see more of in our community, more bike lanes and pedestrian-friendly areas, so thank you for moving that forward. I'm also a big fan of 38th Avenue and the improvements there. I am really excited. I enjoy the new businesses that have moved in. This coupled with the increase in revenue our city is seeing is something that I'm really excited about, so I wanted to thank those of you who have supported that. Finally, I know that that has been a decisive issue, and I think that there's a bright side to that, and that's more involvement from neighbors and residents here in Wheat Ridge. We do have a voice, and I think you're only going to see more involvement moving forward, so good luck with the election to those of you who are up for it, and thank you for your time.
Please spell your last name for the record.
My name is Rachel Hultin, and my last name is spelled H-U-L-T-I-N, and I live at 4690 Balsam. I'm here tonight just because I'm the Live Well Wheat Ridge Transition Coordinator, and I just want to thank city council, the mayor, and the city for their continued investment in our vibrant, healthy, and active community. The funding of continued streetscape buildout of the ridge at 38th and infrastructure improvements such as the bike facilities on Pierce Street will directly impact the access to safe, active transportation options for broadband of our community. I just want to share that in the last week, my family, we've enjoyed riding our bikes in the community. We have walked to the ridge at 38th to participate in the trunk retreat celebration, which was a really wonderful, diverse celebration of our community. We had dinner with other neighbors in Wheat Ridge at Right Coast Pizza where my friend's son lost his first tooth, and everyone celebrated, and it just felt really very community-based, and it really made me want to just keep going back to there. My son, when we showed up at trunk or treat, goes, "Oh, this is where we went to yoga this summer," and those are just such strong associations in the community. I do encourage the city to engage citizens in the planning and implementation of your projects, soliciting input on how to best serve the needs of the many, in particular our most vulnerable neighbors, those who are too young or physically unable to drive. Looking beyond this upcoming fiscal year as new families and businesses weave into the existing multi-generational fabric, I hope city leaders will work diligently to explore ways to deepen the investment in mobility options, activity centers, and connected neighborhoods. Thank you very much for your service.
My name is Rick Kratzser, K-R-A-T-Z-E-R. I live at 2825 Newland Street, and I came tonight to voice my support with the progress that we're seeing with the ridge at 38th, 38th Avenue in particular. We moved here 13 years ago, I think, this month. We're very excited about the community. We have three small children that go to school in the area here. Excited about the bike lanes. As you all know, young kids like to ride their bikes, and it hasn't been quite as accessible as we've wanted it to be in the past. We're very excited to see that type of growth, so thank you for considering that. We've been very excited. We came to this side of town because at first we were attracted by the businesses at 32nd. It was young, it was vibrant, it was exciting. We weren't able to move to that side of the town. My family, my cousins grew up in Wheat Ridge, went to Wheat Ridge High School. We had family here since the early '70s, so had always been very associated with the area, so it was always intriguing to me. I grew up in East Aurora, but again, we moved here because of what was there, and as we've seen, things begin to change on 38th. Right Coast Pizza is one of our children's favorite places. We went to trunk or treat this weekend, had a really good time seeing the dance and the different diversity, I guess, the different people that were there. Kids were being exposed to that, and then we went to Colorado Plus. So it's very nice to see some of those type of things that are attractive to us, you know, and I just really would like to see that continue. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Amanda Weaver. I'm at 11100 West 38th Avenue, and I was here last month.
Amanda, would you just spell your last name for the record, please?
Sure. I was here last month just in support of all of the positive changes that have been happening on 38th, and I also wanted to show my support tonight just for the exciting things that are happening with bike and pedestrian connections around Wheat Ridge. For those of you who don't know, I own a farm that is over on 38th Avenue that used to be Louise Turner's, and we have been doing a lot of connecting with local food, including all of the businesses on 38th and others around Wheat Ridge, to really get that connection. And what we're seeing is that people really want bikeways, walkways, and then to connect all of this food and business together. So I just wanted to thank you all for really looking forward towards those kinds of connections. Thanks.
Please spell your last name for the record and spell your...
My name is Carol Sue Fricke, F-R-I-C-K-E-L. I live at 11686 West 37th Place, and I am the coordinator for the Backpack Program at Color Strand, and that's the organization under Feed the Future, which I want to give a big thank you for your support. Wheat Ridge Council has given $10,000 to the Feed the Future program this year, and $10,000 couldn't do to go to a better organization. I want to show you the food, a typical bag of food that we give to the students. I bet you don't know that, do you? Here it is. It's nothing to brag about. You would have to use your ingenuity, your cook's ingenuity, to put together a couple of meals. This is just supplemental food. It's not a whole food, it's not a meal, it's supplemental food for the weekend, when these children many times go hungry. So here's what they got last weekend.
We get the food delivered to us by our volunteers from Color Strand, and we unload the trucks. We take dollys out there and unload these big crates of food, and we recycle our bags, so we never use firsthand bags. This year, we, they got a bag of good beans. We put that there, and this is all done in a kind of a, one person does one thing, one another is assembly line. They got a can of bean fried on the only, and a can of food from... This week, they were really lucky. They got two ranges. Most of the time, they don't get fresh food. And as a treat, they got a chewy bark and apple juice, and that is it. And that provided for if a child had, if a child had three siblings, there are three siblings who each get a bag. This year, we are not getting any commodities from the United States government because the process would be too difficult and quite demeaning to the families. They would have to come each week to the food bank, sign in, and all of that, so we're having to buy food, just like you buy food, we would buy food, but we get it from the media. So that's it. I just wanted you to know that and how much we appreciate you.
Do you have anybody else here for public comment? Seeing that we'll move on, any changes to the agenda? Next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item one is Resolution 42-2, 2013, Ms. J.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 42-213, adopting the city budget and appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amount specified for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for the 2014 budget. Wait a minute, I'm reading from the... Here we go. Resolution 42-213, a resolution adopting, we already did that, appropriating sums of money, we've said it, okay. At issue, section 10-9 of the Wheat Ridge City Charter requires that the budget be adopted by resolution on and before the final day, December 15, 2013, established by state statute for the certification of the next year's tax levy to the county. The proposed 2014 budget includes the following: 8.3 million in proposed expenditures directly linked to city council's strategic goals. Revised proposed general fund budget in the amount of $27,760,611, excuse me, $27,760,611, which includes reductions in the amount of $113,000 and council additions in the amount of $50,000 for a surplus of $63,000, which has been transferred to the CIP budget for bicycle, pedestrian improvements along Pierce Street. Number three, proposed capital investment program, known as CIP, funded in the amount of $4,186,000. Item four, proposed special revenue funds in the amount of $4,922,715, for a total of all the proposed budget, all funds in the amount of $36,869,326.
Motion's in order.
Motion's in order. I move to approve Resolution number 42-2013, a resolution adopting the city budget and appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amount specified for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for the 2014 budget year.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 42-2013, was seconded by Mr. Starker. Is there anybody here to talk under the budget, under the public comment? We had a public hearing last week, or last meeting. Anybody here to speak? Okay, we'll move on to the main motion or amendments. Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I'd like to offer an amendment, and if it's seconded, I'll give you my reasons why, but we have $230,000 going to Wheat Ridge 2020. I would like to put that back into the general budget.
Make that as an amendment?
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
You have a motion to amend by $230 to remove all the funds from Wheat Ridge 2020 and put it back in the general fund?
Yeah, and I'll tell you why. One...
Second by Mr. Demott.
You go down through the list here, and we have our own economic development department that I believe should be handling a lot of this. We have 38th Avenue Corridor Marketing Map and Directory, $7,000. That's city. 38th Avenue Corridor Marketing Materials Website, $35,000 to Wheat Ridge 2020. 38th Avenue Corridor Banners and Lighting Program, $25,000 to 2020. 38th Avenue District Feasibility Study, $20,000. That was reduced by 10. Citywide Marketing Positioning Tours, $15,000. Live Local Events, $40,000. That was reduced by $5,000 initially. Building Up Business Loan Program, $25,000 to 2020. East Wheat Ridge Block Improvement Program, $20,000. That was reduced by $5,000. Home Investment Loan Program, $25,000 to Wheat Ridge 2020. Now, this money, I think, should go back into the general fund or into our Economic Development Department, because I think our Economic Development Department can do and should be doing everything that's on this list that's going to 2020 plus. 2020 charges us a 10% administrative fee, so we're going to save 10% above that, and I also think that, if I can find it here, the corridor banners and lighting programs should be handled by our Economic Development Department. Marketing materials, websites should be handled by our own Economic Development Department, so that would be my suggestion. Also, Councilman Demott and I were approached by the Wheat Ridge Historical Society. They've got problems there with the age of someone, the people that have been there for years. They would like to be able to handle or hire a part-time person for $10 an hour. We need to study that, find out what they need, and to keep the Historical Society a viable program in this city. Otherwise, it's going to shut down. We're going to have several buildings that are shut down, so I think that we need to study that, and by putting this 230,000 back into the general budget, I think we can cover that. Plus, I think that, like I said, our Economic Development Department should be handling all this at 2020's handling.
Comments on the amendment?
I'd like to speak to that.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Yeah, I'd like to start by thanking the staff for all the hard work that's gone into this budget. I think you've responded to the things that we've asked for up to this point in the citizens' comments. Like with so many budgets, there's quite a large number, and I am getting to the point here, of things that are both controversial and subject to revision, and potentially the issue in this particular amendment, certainly one of them, but I won't be supporting this amendment for perhaps what's mostly a procedural reason. When I came on council four years ago, I was delivered a box like this, and the previous camp looked like this. The previous council had been unable to pass a budget because they had it bogged down on specific issues, and the issue Mr. Stites brings up, I think, is certainly worthy of discussion, but the eight of us sitting on the table tonight are not going to be the ones that make the final determination. So barring here is something new, I won't be supporting amendments. I think this budget represents the direction we have given to council up to this point, and I think some of the issues that may be controversial that could be brought up tonight will have to be revisited by the next council in any event, so I will not be supporting this amendment.
Any other comments? Ms. Davis?
Thank you. I just have a bit of feedback. I do think that there are, and I think we've talked about this in our study session, that there are some monies that definitely need to be evaluated as far as is it the right amount of money, is it the right place to allocate the funds. I do think that's important, that we do review that, because I do feel some of it's a duplication. I feel some of it could probably be folded into some of what the city's doing, and I do feel that there's other areas in the city that could utilize those funds just as readily, just as we discussed the bike path. I know that was a 63 or the bike route, and that was what we ended up saving in one area, but I'm not certain that that dollar amount is what's going to be to get the job done. So I do think that there are a lot of questions to some of the expenses. So I do think that there, um, there are a lot of questions to some of the expenses on the list, and I do think that we need to scrutinize how those expenses are made. And my understanding is as these expenses come up, they will get, the council will address them on a case-by-case basis, correct, Patrick? It's not just a gimme that it's gonna go get approved that way, correct?
Well, a majority of them will not come back to council unless they're over the thirty-five thousand dollar, um, threshold limit. Um, but, um, some of these funds do not go directly to Wheat Ridge twenty twenty. Um, Wheat Ridge twenty twenty has to draw down the funds over the year. They have to provide the, the invoices and, and work orders for any products, um, that they purchase. So it's not a direct, um, distribution to twenty twenty, except for, um, the loan program, the bubble, the building up business loan and the HIP program. Those funds are, are directly given to twenty twenty and they have a program to distribute those dollars.
Okay. I do think, um, I do, I do think it needs to be something that we look at and review. And I also agree, I guess, uh, from also being a city council person that was voted in right after a large decision was made, i.e. the road diet with, and then having to, um, implement the program without having to vote on it. I, I do think it is difficult, um, because there are gonna be four new people coming on the budget that are gonna have ideas and visions and, um, suggestions on, on where those monies should go as well. So, um, just a discussion items.
Any other comments before we vote on the amendment?
Uh, Jerry.
Ms. Jay?
I think it's good to always review the budget items, large items, et cetera. Uh, when we look at these funds that are, that are being, um, budgeted or, or planned to go to the twenty twenty staff, I, I think we have to realize that they're all under Economic Development, most of it. So mu- so much of it is directly then pushed on to, uh, events. Uh, that's one of my notes, eighty thousand dollars just for events, four different events. Um, and even whether our staff is doing it or the twenty twenty staff is doing it, it's people that need to do it. And, um, the twenty twenty staff ha- is, um, also has the ability to, uh, round up a lot of volunteers. Matter of fact, uh, they have one hundred active volunteers and the city can't always pull that in. So as we review these things and I, I appreciate the, the attempt to do that, as we do that, we have to think about the fact that it's just not, you can't just, uh, okay, let staff take care of that because what you're doing is you're losing more than, than that staff. You're also losing a lot of volunteers and you're also losing the, the ability to, um, receive donations and other abilities that twenty twenty has. So, uh, they have really, um, developed a, a wonderful group of people who are helpful to our city and I, I think we need to think about that before we even consider, um, activities that would, that would harm what's been a very valuable program for us. That's all.
Mr. Pond?
Thank you. I, one thing I do support is what I think I heard, and that is that these are things that need to be done. You know, and I think that's a very important part, um, for us to, to make sure that we understand that continuing to, to provide resources in order to, to do these things and move these initiatives forward is important. Um, and I certainly suppose we could talk about exactly where it's going to. But I don't think the timing is right to do that right now. I'm not gonna support this amendment.
Mr. Demont?
You know, while I feel, uh, where the amendment is coming from, I think that, uh, you know, although Wheat Ridge twenty twenty has definitely, I, in my opinion, changed directions in the last few years, um, I do feel that what they're doing is, is still a viable process. I don't think I, I support the amendment in whole, but I do have some, um... Amendments that I think will be better if I bring up separately than this one, so I think I'll wait on those.
Right, please poll the council on the amendment to remove two hundred and thirty thousand dollars? Put it back in the general fund?
Motion fails seven to one with council members Demont, Pond, Davis, Starker, Langworthy, Jay and Reinhardt voting no.
Any other amendments? Mr. Demont?
Uh, I spoke briefly about the Carnation Festival in the last study session. Um, nothing was really, has come of that, but, um, the yearly cash, uh... Contribution from the city is twelve thousand, five hundred to the Carnation Festival. And as I said before, that, that pays for is the fireworks. Um, everything else that happens down there is done through fundraising or other means. Still in the same subject here on Thirty-Eighth Avenue Public Events, um, they're requesting eighty thousand dollars for public events there. The Carnation Festival truly is your forty-year event. I mean, this is your festival that, that represents the city. And while I don't think we need eighty thousand dollars, um, I would like to make a motion to amend the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Public Events Budget less by fifteen thousand dollars to sixty-five thousand dollars and to add that fifteen thousand dollars to the Carnation Festival Cash Contribution to make a total of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the amendment? Okay, I guess, poll the council on the amendment?
Motion is tied four to four.
But they're amending the resolution?
This is a, this is a motion to amend the budget. So the mayor does not, this is one of the few times the mayor does not break a tie. So a tie vote, uh, fails in that event, so the motion fails.
Okay, we have the main motion with no amendments. Any other amendments? Please poll the ca- Mr. Demont?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to amend the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Public Events Budget by, less by ten thousand to seventy thousand and to increase the Carnation Festival Cash Contribution to twenty, by ten thousand to twenty-two thousand, five hundred.
Ms. Jay, will you clear the, clear the board, please?
I will, I'm still writing this all down.
Sure. I met, I move to amend the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Public Events Budget of eighty thousand, less by ten thousand dollars to seventy thousand dollars and to add that ten thousand dollars to the Carnation Festival Cash Contribution of twelve thousand, five hundred for a total of twenty-two thousand, five hundred.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please poll the council on the amendment?
Motion carries seven to one with Mr. Reinhardt voting no.
Okay, so we have an amendment that passed that the Wheat Ridge twenty twenty events on Thirty-Eighth Avenue was reduced by ten thousand and ten thousand was added to the, uh, Carnation Festival Cash Contribution? Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just below that on that same page, I'm looking at Forty-Fourth Avenue Corridor Marketing Efforts. Um, there has been some efforts done down there and they're, they're great. I don't, I know there isn't anything continuing at the moment. Um, one thing that we've, you know, appreciated about that street and, um, District Four is the Historical Society and we were approached by, um, Historical Society to try and find some funding to help with a part-time employee there. I would like to make a motion to amend the Forty-Fourth Avenue Corridor Marketing Efforts, ten thousand dollar budgets to be allocated to the Historical Society for part-time employment.
Are, are we still on the amendment talking about, uh, Wheat Ridge twenty twenty and the budget relative to that?
Well, that amendment passed, so now we're on a new, new amendment.
Full resolute, the resolution.
Yeah, we're still on the main motion though, we haven't voted on the main motion for the resolution yet. They, we have one amendment that's passed.
I'm, I'm moving to amend Joyce's resolution.
This is the second amendment. So you wanna repeat your motion, Mr. Demont?
I move to eliminate the Forty-Fourth Avenue Corridor Marketing Efforts Budget of ten thousand dollars and to allocate that ten thousand dollars to the Historical Society for the purposes of hiring a part-time employee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on the amendment? Mr. Pond? Uh, Mr. Stites?
I'm hesitant to support this only because frankly, it seems like in both cases, both for the marketing of Forty-Fourth and/or for understanding the position for the Historical Society. I feel like I, I would prefer to have more information, um, in order to vote. I don't, you know, I, I support frankly both, both things and without a little bit more context, I feel like, I feel like, um, you know, it's, it's hard for me to strip one and, 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 um, and give to the other. But I don't know if, if there's more context that, that can be given right now. If not, I'd prefer to take action on it later if possible.
So the amendment is to eliminate the Forty-Fourth Avenue Marketing Efforts and allocate that to the Historical Society for a part-time employee? Discussion on that amendment? Ms. Davis?
Um, I, I would just like to mirror what Mr. Pond had said. I do believe the Historical Society, um, i- is a group that needs our support and, and I guess I'd like a better understanding of what support they need because, uh, you know, is ten thousand enough, quite honestly? Um, and then with that in mind, with the marketing of Forty-Fourth, I know that that's something that, you know, we wanna continue to do. I know we've done, um, I know a lot of the businesses and have really taken hold of that and done it on their own, but as a city, I think it's important for us to support Forty-Fourth Avenue and, and some of their, if, if there's gonna be programs that they do along the way and there might need to be a, a need for marketing. So I, I as well support both, um, but I also don't know that I have enough information to make a decision to take away one, to give to the other because I do believe that both are very important.
Mr. Demont?
Um, you know, the Historical Society has really only requested ten thousand, so I assume they think that's enough. They're from zero, that's a pretty good jump. And no, we haven't, I mean, you're right, we haven't discussed either of these. So, I mean, I would ask Patrick, what, what are we including in the Forty-Fourth Avenue Corridor Marketing Efforts? I mean, specifically, we haven't been notified of any needs, I, you know, persisting needs that we need to take care of. What is that, what's in that part of it?
There's not a specific plan at this point. The plan would be to meet with businesses along the corridor and, and see what they would like. We, we've, we've heard from numerous businesses over the last couple of years that city's not paying enough attention to Forty-Fourth and putting all of our money in Thirty-Eighth. We did work with them, um, on their forty-four businesses on Forty-Fourth campaign and the city did, um, actually pay for that flyer for them, um, out of the economic development budget, but we thought it would be, be prudent to budget some funds and, and determine what we could do next year.
Mr. Starker?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was, um, wondering if Mr. Demont might entertain a friendly amendment rather than taking those ten thousand dollars of funds from the Forty-Fourth Avenue Marketing Efforts? And perhaps reduce the Green Belt Trail Master Plan Study, uh, by ten thousand dollars from fifty thousand to forty thousand.
Is that open space funding?
Yeah, those funds are in open space. Uh, it's a separate fund and a separate revenue source. Um, we can't use those funds for this.
What if we were to take that out of the general, general unallocated funds?
You could.
We could do that, would that, um, would that be a way to?
What are we talking about there that?
Just in, instead of reducing the Forty-Fourth Avenue Corridor Marketing Efforts, uh, by ten thousand, leave that where it is and, and take ten thousand dollars out of the general undesignated funds and provide that funding to the Wheat Ridge Historical Society?
Yeah, I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Well, there's really no such thing as a friendly amendment. That's, that's kinda been a, I think we've done in the past. What I'd recommend is you vote this amendment up and down and then make a new amendment. Mr. Langworthy?
You know, what I would, um, if we're, we're even talking about maybe having this come out of the general fund, what I'd like to do is just leave what we have there and bring back to a study session because it's ten thou- uh, it, it may be enough for this year, but is it, you know, I really wanna know what their long-term plan is, what they might need from us as, as a long-term goal because this seems like it's just kind of a Band-Aid on a problem and we really want them to have a, a long-term solution or at lea- you know, look a little bit further out than just one year. And we can do that at the study session, have them come and talk to us and really see what their needs are. Cause maybe, you know, like you said, maybe ten thousand isn't enough. Maybe there is other needs that they have.
Mr. Demont?
You know, I'm just gonna be frank with you, that it's a sort of killing two birds with one stone for me. You know, um, you know, you sort of hit the nail on the head, Tracy. Ten thousand dollars is just putting a Band-Aid on something that's not there. It's, it's, you know, we're offering up ten thousand dollars to Forty-Fourth Avenue, you know, and calling it a marketing effort when we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on Thirty-Eighth. Forty-Fourth Avenue, no one's asking for this money. No one has come forward and said, can we please have ten thousand dollars? There's no, no identified task that needs to be done immediately. So if that comes forward, we could definitely ask for that, you know? I do own a business on Forty-Fourth. I have not heard anyone asking for any sort of, um, anything for ten thousand dollars for, for the city to do for us. You know, we all just kinda keep chugging along. But we were approached, you know, where the Historical Society hasn't set aside a study session to, you know, tell us everything they've done. I mean, if you've been down to the, to the Ba House and to the Sadi and all that stuff, you see what they do. It's been purely volunteer. We did get them a computer last year, they were very, very grateful for that. But, I mean, they, they main- the parks maintain the outside, but they clean them. The Historical Society has volunteers that clean. They, um, run tours five days a week and they're just asking for ten thousand dollars to hire a part-time person. I don't think that if we wait and have a study session that that number is gonna change for them.
And I agree, it may not change, but I guess we, we're, you know, for me, it's really about that. If, if, if the age of their membership is really declining, it, it seems that there's a bigger problem at hand. Uh, well, that's what somebody said, is that the age is declining and that they wanted to have help with a part-time employee.
Well, I didn't say that.
Okay. That's what I heard, so if I didn't, I apologize, but I, I, I still, I mean, I'm, and if the ten thousand doesn't get spent on Forty-Fourth Avenue efforts, then it just goes back to the general fund anyways. I, I, I would still, I mean, I would still recommend that we have them come to a study session and talk to us cause I'd really like to know, cause I feel like we don't always hear from them and it would be a good thing to hear from them. They're an important part of our community and we should hear more.
Okay, so we have an amendment by Mr. Demont to reduce the Forty-Fourth Avenue Marketing and to add it to the Historical Society and then we, it was a discussion about that maybe not passing, you take it out of the general fund. So do you, poll the council on the amendment?
I see.
Or Ms. Davis?
Um, just, just one other thing, Joey. I don't know that I've heard anything specific as far as what they wanna do with ten thousand dollars, but I have heard, you know, comments of, is there any plans to help us and market us? I mean, I have heard general comments from several businesses, um, on, on your side of, of Wadsworth and then also on the other side of Wadsworth. There's some newer businesses there, you know, the Dance Studio and, and I know the owner there, uh, starts with an E, her last name. But there have been other comments made by other business owners as far as, you know, what kind of projects could be available to us. So I, I would just hate to, even though we don't have something specific like it's X, I would just hate to wipe that out just cause we don't have an exact plan.
Okay, please poll the council on the amendment. Okay, please pull the council on the amendment for the forty-fourth Avenue versus the, um, taking out of forty-fourth Avenue Marketing and putting into Historical Society, that amendment we're voting on now?
Motion fails. A two to six with council members Pond, Davis, Starker, Langworthy, Jay and Reinhardt voting no.
Mr. Demott, you want to make the, the amendment taking it out of the general fund?
I have another idea for an amendment. I'd like to make an amendment if, um, I actually would like to make an amendment, um, to reduce the thirty-eighth Avenue Corridor Marketing Materials and Website from thirty-five thousand to twenty-five thousand and allocate ten thousand to the Historic Society. Also with that being said, I would still like the Historic Society to, to come to a study session and share with us their, you know, what, what they need from us, but at least that would, um, put that in the budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
The amendment now is to reduce the website budget by ten thousand and add it to a-
Marketing and website.
Website and marketing and add that to a Historical Society part-time person, discussion on that amendment? Please pull the council?
I guess you didn't see me ask for-
I didn't see you.
Um, once again, I'd like to know what that means as far as the website is concerned, uh, what that means, that reduction. That website is so, um, is a value to the businesses because so many of the businesses are able to partake in that website with no charge to them, which is pretty darn valuable. Uh, if that reduces that capacity, it maybe that they would have to kick in more or something like that. I'm open to this, but I, I wish we would have more discussion on it and I also, I'm very open to, to the Historical Society because we have no, uh, historical preservation going either within the city of Wheat Ridge and I think that is, has somewhat of a, of a value, an economic value to it as far as visitors coming. So I think these are, are tough questions that I don't want to just run through here at this time. I'd like to really look at both, both situations.
Any other comments on the amendment? Please pull the council on the amendment?
Didn't I? I thought I did. All right, vote again, maybe I didn't. We'll see. Motion fails three to five with council members Pond, Starker, Langworthy, Jay and Reinhardt voting no.
Uh, just to interject here, I did hear that there was support for taking ten thousand dollars out of the general, unallocated for this program and that seemed to have some support, Mr. Pond?
Well. To be specific, I don't support that, but that's, uh, what, I, I absolutely support us having the conversation and talking about all of these things. Frankly, these are small dollars, um, important but small inside of a larger context. I think that many of them need more, um, uh, information to go along with it. Uh, I know that we have sat up here and it will perhaps as, as Davis has mentioned, be the next council, but they will have an opportunity to look at the overall budget and, and try to make decisions that, that can, that can adjust to, to meet the needs of some of, of some of these things. Um, in, in the meantime, I would say that, that I don't, you know, support it, because if I'm, unless I'm wrong and I want to make sure I'm really clear, the sixty, sixty-three thousand is the unallocated portion of the, of the budget right now, how, um, but i- i- is that correct or not? That, that we, that we were going to put back in the, to the, to the, to Pierce, but is, am I incorrect about it or that is in fact the bucket of money we're talking about?
That's the surplus that, um, we were proposing you put towards, um, put in the CIP budget towards Pierce Street Bicycle Facilities, but you could take ten out of the, um, un- undesignated reserves, unallocated.
So that's a different bucket, but we could equally take ten out of that later.
Correct, sixty, yes.
Later, I mean, in other words, not, I mean, with the context of having more information, that can be, that can be just as easily taken out later.
Any more amendments? Mr. Stites?
Well then, I would like to see the ten thousand come out of the unallocated for that, because I think they're going to need help going into the first part of the year and then we can find out later, you know, what they're going to need, so that would be mine, that we take ten thousand out of unallocated.
For the Historical Society?
Yes.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, now this motion is to take ten thousand dollars out of the unallocated reserve and allocate that towards the Historical Society, part-time person. Discussion on that amendment?
Does that mean that the, the Pierce Street, uh, is, is drops another ten? No, but are we still at our seventeen percent that we have to retain?
Yeah, ten thousand won't impact that percentage probably that much, so.
Okay.
All right, so this amendment is taking ten thousand dollars out of the unallocated reserve, it's not affecting the bike paths on Pierce. Uh, please pull the council on that amendment?
Motion fails four to four with council members Pond, Davis, Langworthy and Reinhardt voting no.
Is there a ma-, is, we have a, the main motion that was amended by one amendment, please pull the council on the main motion as amended?
Just, just a minute, let me get this down.
Well, the main motion is to approve the budget and you passed one amendment, which was to allocate money towards the Carnation Festival. Out of a forty-six million dollar budget.
Okay.
Mr. Stites?
Yeah, before we vote here, I think this was a very good discussion tonight. You know, Patrick said it all, that it, once it goes into that budget and it hits that magical thirty-five thousand or whatever under that, we don't see it. We don't see it, so it's good to question stuff here in meetings, study sessions or whatever. And I don't care if it's five thousand dollars, I don't care if it's five million dollars, the five thousand dollars is just as important as the five million. It adds up and it adds up, so I hate hearing that type of stuff, but I just want to say this was a, I thought a good discussion tonight, but like I said, once it gets in that budget, they'll spend it because unless it's under, if it's under thirty-five thousand, it's gone.
So the main motion is to approve Resolution forty-two dash two thousand thirteen, the only amendment that actually passed was the amendment about concerning, uh, the Carnation Festival. Oh, Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to, um, on the amount of money, the sixty-three thousand dollars that's been transferred to the CIP budget for the bicycle pedestrian improvements along Pierce Street, I'd like to add the following language. And other items in the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan, uh, for any surplus funds up to that number. What, I, I added for any, for any other items in the Bicycle Med, Ped Master Plan for any surplus funds up to that sixty-three thousand dollar number, if the, if the, if the improvements for the Pierce Street bike didn't come in at, at, at sixty-three thousand, I would like to allocate all of that money for bicycle and pedestrian features.
Citywide.
Citywide, yeah, in accordance with the master plan.
Is there a second? Discussion, oh, the second by Ms. Langworthy, um.
Can I just ask you if you could pass that wording to me so I can get it in the?
I've got it.
You don't have to do it right now.
I can pass it if you can read it.
Ms. Shaver, I have it too.
Okay, all right. Okay, please pull the council on the amendment?
All right, vote. Okay. Let's try again, let's try again.
You have to, she reset it.
Motion carries seven to one. With Mr. Reinhardt voting no, sorry.
Okay, now we have a main motion with two amendments, any other discussions or any other amendments on the budget? Please pull the council on the main motion as amended?
Wait, I gotta clear it, hang on. The main motion carries seven to one with Councilmember Stites voting no.
Thank you. Item two is Resolution forty-three dash two thousand thirteen, Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number forty-three dash twenty thirteen, a resolution levying general property taxes for the year twenty thirteen to help defray the cost of government for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for the twenty fourteen budget year. The city's mill levy will be set at one point eight three mil, raising seven hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars in property tax revenue. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution number forty-three dash twenty thirteen, a resolution levying a mill levy of one point eight three mil on general property taxes for the year twenty thirteen to help defray the cost of government for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for twenty fourteen budget year.
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number two, a second by Mr. Demott, discussion on item two? Please pull the council?
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Item three is Resolution forty-four dash twenty thirteen, Mr. Stites?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Resolution number forty-four twenty thirteen. A resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between Jefferson County Sheriff's Office and the cities of Arvada, Golden, Lakewood, Westminster and Wheat Ridge to share criminal intelligence information using the Crime Tell Share, Shared Database. Criminal enterprises do not recognize jurisdictional lines as criminal investigators work with their colleagues in other jurisdictions. Intelligent officers must also have a way to store and share information. Crime Intel is a database that is useful for each jurisdiction to enter, store and share criminal intelligence information that complies with federal guidelines. A shared database allows for more comprehensive information at lower than a standalone database for each city. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution number forty-four twenty thirteen, a resolution approving MOU with Jefferson County Sheriff's Office and the cities of Arvada, Golden, Lakewood, Westminster, Wheat Ridge to share criminal intelligence information throughout the Crime Intel Database.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number three, a second by Mr. Starker, discussion on item three? Please pull the council?
Motion carries eight zero.
Uh, thank you. Item four, Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve the annual police radio system contract payment to the West Metro Fire Protection District in the amount of one hundred and one thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars fifty-four cents for police radio system services. Is the motion in order?
Uh, motion's in order.
I move to approve payment to the West Metro Fire Protection District in the amount of one hundred and one thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars fifty-four cents for police radio system services.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number four, a second by Ms. Langworthy, discussion on item four? Please pull the council?
Motion carries eight zero.
Uh, thank you. Item five, Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to appoint Rocco Rocky Germano to the Board of Adjustment Alternate At-Large Vacancy. Term to expire March second, two thousand sixteen.
Is motion in order?
I move to appoint Rocco Rocky Germano to the Board of Adjustment as an As-Large Alternate, term ending March second, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number five, a second by Mr. Stites, discussion on item five? Please pull the council?
Motion carries eight zero.
Uh, thank you. Item six, Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to, uh, make a motion to ratify the mayoral reappointment of Jesse Hill to renewal Wheat Ridge, term to expire November thirty, two thousand eighteen. Is the motion in order?
Uh, motion's in order.
I move to ratify the mayoral appointment of Jesse Hill to be reappointed to Wheat, to renewal Wheat Ridge, representing District One, term to expire November thirty, two thousand eighteen.
Is there a second? We have a motion to approve Jesse Hill, a second by Mr. Demott, discussion? Please pull the council?
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Item seven, Mr. Reinhardt?
Thank you. I'd like to introduce, uh, a motion to cancel the regular meeting in the City Council on November twenty-five, two thousand and thirteen due to the Thanksgiving holiday and that a regular meeting be converted, be convened prior to the study session November thirteenth, uh, for what I regard as the critical in business and one of the important things we really do as a civic matter and that is the swearing in of the new council and, and the actions associated with it. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to, I lost my place, I move to cancel the regular meeting of the City Council on November twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen due to Thanksgiving holiday and that a regular meeting be convened prior to the study session of November eighteen, two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
We have a motion to approve item seven, a second by Mr. Starker, discussion? Please pull the council?
Motion carries eight zero.
Well, that concludes our agenda for this evening, can we move on to city managers' matters?
I don't have anything this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters?
Nothing, happy Thanksgiving, or no, excuse me, Halloween, Halloween, I'm a little early.
City clerks' matters?
Um, I just want to thank all of the candidates and there's one committee, um, political committee this season for turning in their finance reports all on time. Those reports are posted on the city's website and if council or candidates or anybody in the public would like to, um, see those finance reports, on the very first page of the city website, there is a link down in the lower right corner that says twenty thirteen election. And if you click on that quick link, um, it goes to election and you click on candidates and all of the documents are there and it, it'll say, I think, I think it says finance report number one. Or campaign report number one, uh, but those, all of their campaign donations and expenditures and all of that um, are posted there for, for public viewing and that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to, um, wish all of our citizens a, uh, very, uh, not-too spooky and very safe Halloween, thank you.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Thank you. I just, um, would take this opportunity on the possibility that this is the last night of the di- dius to thank the staff for all the support and help they've given me in my four years here and thanks to the citizens for having allowed me to serve these last four years, thank you.
Ms. Davis?
I would like, uh, to comment on the trunk-or-treat program. I actually, um, I promise I did not go from trunk-to-trunk to trick-or-treat, but I was in the area and what a great turnout. It was, it was nice to see actually police directing traffic because there was so much traffic and so many families and kids and sitting out, and the weather was nice, sitting out in the, in the lawn, so I want to thank the organizers and volunteers and participants in the trunk-or-treat program because, um, as many of our guests had said tonight, it, it looked like a great success and um, I also invite everyone to come to my house, uh, on Halloween to trick-or-treat. Um, the other comments I'd like to do, uh, like to say is I'd like to thank Ms. Mrs. Frickle for coming and talking about the Feed the Future Program. I do think that, um, that's an important program and a great program and, and also to thank the police chief for that because he does volunteer and, and help a lot in that program. And, um, I would encourage our, our community members if they can at all help with that program. Um, it's a good program to volunteer or donate to. And finally, I'd also, as Chair of Urban Renewal or Renewal Wheat Ridge, I'd, um, like to voice my excitement to have, uh, Mr. Hill back on the committee. He's a great asset to the committee and, and, uh, brings all types of perspectives and, and feedback and input and I think that's the important thing is, is that we all have, uh, the right to speak our, our thoughts and our opinions and I'm hopeful that either in the next study, in one of the next study sessions or meetings that, um, he'll come and report some of our updates on renewal Wheat Ridge. That's all.
Ms. Jay?
Couple of things, um, first of all, a- as Mr. Reinhardt did, I, I'm realizing that this is my last turn at this particular microphone and that's, um, sad and glad, it's, it's all kinds of things. It's been a delight, um, working with the constituents in District Two, I've received a lot of, uh, queries about different things and, and that's part of the pleasure of, of being on City Council. And then I, I want to remen- remind you, uh, Mr. Adams brought in a, a very, um, important meeting that so, so affects our city, which is the development of the transit area development, the, the actual site where, um, the commuter trains will, will, um, will end up.
and that the development around there is very critical and, and could be quite interesting and a big part of, of Wheat Ridge as it grows and moves and changes. So please, if you can, or think about it, attend that, that meeting, which is at the Rec Center, I think it's Wednesday, the thirtieth, um, and five-thirty to eight. I, I think it's worth really attending that to, to see, put your input in, because this could be a, a little village, all of our own, uh, right out there at that site, which is at about Fiftieth and Ward Road. Very, very interesting development going out there. And I got one more thing I want to do. Patrick, um, forwarded to us, I know everybody in council received this, but I, I was particularly taken with it, and, and it's a letter from, um, a new business that's coming here, which signed a lease on a hundred thousand square foot greenhouse, the purpose of growing four hundred thousand pounds of organic tomatoes each year. Well, that in itself is pretty neat, but the, the letter speaks so well of our staff, Office of Economic Development, Steve Art, zoning, Lauren, uh, miss, miss, I'll mess up her name. Yeah, that one. Alright. Building Department, John Shoemaker, Inspector Kirk, Fire Marshal Kelly Brooks, all focused on solutions and helped us achieve our goals. The neighbors have embraced our project. The entire community seems to be focused on doing what's best for the community at large. Uh, one more thing he says, "We have greenhouses in many counties across the Front Range, and I can say from general experience that Wheat Ridge is my favorite place to do business." That just feels really good to me, and I, I think we're all glad to hear that kind of news. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will, uh, just talk a little bit on the, on that budget conversation. Um, I do think all of this is important. So much so, that I, I want to particularly thank everyone who's shown up over the last few weeks to, um, comment on, on the budget and to talk about the things that are going on in, in the city. So, I would agree, that regardless of the dollar amount, it's important for us to, to hear everyone's voice and to continue to have this dialogue moving in, uh, past tonight and into, into, uh, the rest of this year and into next year, as we manage this and kind of go, go forward. So I've been particularly, um, um, you know, happy to see, you know, people showing up to, to, uh, engage in the process of, of, of their community. And certainly, we, we had an opportunity to, uh, celebrate all the people who, um, serve on our boards and commissions recently, and, uh, that's, that's, that's one way, and I, and, and I'm happy that everyone does that. There's a lot of ways to be involved, and I hope that everyone continues to be involved in shaping our future. Thank you.
I guess it's my turn now. After ten years, this will be my last business meeting, uh, back here. Uh, I'd like to thank staff for giving me ten years' worth of great information. It's been good. And I'd like to thank all the residents in District Three. Uh, it's been a, a pleasure serving you for ten years, and I, I, I think we've got an awful lot done. Be my last spiel. Uh, be a great time to relocate to Wheat Ridge, either your business or home. If you need any help, I won't be here, but you can see some of them. And the staff would be glad to help you. A positive thing, uh, once again, with the cold weather coming, please make sure that, uh, kids in your neighborhood have coats. I just saw some walk by again today that didn't have any, and it really drives me crazy. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you. Um, first of all, I went to the trunk-or-treat myself. My daughter was away, but my great nephew was with me, and at a year and two months, he just about got distracted oblivion because of all the wonderful trunks and all the kids and costumes, and they ran out of candy not once, but I think twice, and that was before five o'clock. I mean, that's just a lot of kids coming to our city, and when you're driving down Thirty-Eighth Avenue, that makes an impression when you see that many people milling about in a small area. So I'm always, I'm always happy to see that many families together. Also, um, Thursday's Halloween, so watch out for the little ghosts and goblins out there as they, they trick-or-treat. And then there's one other thing, but Nate, I, I don't have my flyer with me. Do you have the information on the rake-athon that we're doing? Okay, so Volunteers of America is looking for people who need their lawns raked, and these are people who need it, not people who just don't want to do it. And seniors, which I mean, they can't do it themselves. And if you have a help, helping hand, you can contact Volunteers of America, and they would be more than willing to let you rake leaves. That's it.
Mr. Demat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was, uh, honored last week by, uh, being able to receive the, uh, plaque for Fruitdale Elementary being accepted to the National Historic Registration of Public Places um, at the Jefferson County Historical Society Award Ceremony that they had. There was people from all over the county, and I also got to accept, uh, the plaque for the Ba House, um, to the National Registry. I was gonna bring it with me, but it's a serious piece of hardware, and, uh, something that'll be mounted on that building for a long time. Um, I'm gonna bring it to the next Housing Authority meeting and present it to them, um, along with some past Housing Authority members that I hope can attend, because they were, um, also important in saving, uh, Fruitdale Elementary. That is all. Thanks.
I had some things to say tonight, but I think I'll just leave it, because I'll get too upset. So, to the citizens of Wheat Ridge, thank you for eighteen years. Hopefully, I'll be back soon. And, um, remember, negative campaigning never works. We're adjourned.